Okay, we'll call the special meeting of the county here together.
Pleasure.
And to the citizens of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first thing on the agenda is to discuss family planning rent. We've talked about it before in other meetings that we had there. What was the ultimate, what's going to be agreed?
About $3,700.
Thirty-seven hundred.
For the year.
Are we completely relieving the rent or pushing it zero out?
Well, it is a subdivision or part of our district health unit, so it's no mandate that we have to charge for rent.
We don't have to charge a dollar.
No. The only place where we would be mandated to charge rent is for the private profit type organization. When it's a governmental subdivision of the county like the water board or so forth, it's not a mandate.
Okay.
So, do you like taxing, having them taxed to pay rent to the county?
We're paying rent to ourselves basically.
Basically, no. So, there should be no problem. Legally, we answered our question at the start with the legality, I'm not sure whether we can do it or not, so. Any other comment?
How often do we review that? Do we review those in December of the year?
Yes.
So, should we maybe for a year or review it in December of 2016?
This is for, I take it for next year, right?
Right, yeah. That's what they're asking for.
Right.
But in order to hire, I think, hire a family nurse practitioner to come in one day a month, they needed to have money of that nature available to them to use it.
If we make the decision today, who's going to retire?
To hire someone.
Well, are they asking to start first January, if anyone is affected immediately?
They're asking to start first January.
So, I'll make a motion to allow the family planning to have a reprieve on their rent for the year 2016.
One second. Make a motion in a second, does that affect? Another discussion?
Hi, sir.
Hi.
Byson.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
The other thing on the agenda is personnel issues. I think we'll start off with Merna, she has a statement.
This is very hard for me and I had to write down my, I had to write down the details of my encounter and therefore I'm just going to read it to you. On Monday, August 17th, I went to the tax director's office and told him to get working on our farm residence tax exemption issue. I asked him to send letters to all tax exempt farm residences along with the NDCC 570208 form so that we would have all exempt and non-exempt issues resolved before the taxes went out. We've been sitting on this since it first came to light with three or more of the commissioners in February. I asked him how to done by the end of the week. Mr. Ratsoff's response was to immediately blame the IT GIS director for not helping enough. I replied that Steve gave him the county map with 578 structures I had identified back in April or May. Despite my directive to have this project complete as soon as possible, he chose to take annual leave on August 20th and 21st. When I called him on this on the 25th, his response was that I must not know much of anything about farming. His family's crop was ready to be harvested and he makes more money in a day of farming than working as the tax director. He did not inform me that he was going to go farming. He just sent me an email saying he was going to be on vacation on the 24th and 25th. I asked him to organize his priorities and he responded by telling me I should just do his job as tax director for him if I know so much about it. I believe this falls squarely under the category of insubordination. On 8/25/15, Jerry asked IT GIS department head Steve Moll to make him a two-foot by three-foot map of fully township. Steve asked him to put that request in the email. I then asked Jerry if he needed maps of all 36 townships and he said yes. When asked why, he claimed he needed them to find structures when he traveled the county or to show them to taxpayers when they came in. I believe that Jerry knows very well where structures in Ramsey County are in his third year tenure. I believe he has resources at his fingertips on his laptop and computer to be provided this information. I did however direct Steve to get them ready. As the conversation continued in Jerry's office, I was disconcerted to hear him make several comments. Number one, if Steve ever dared to call him a name he felt was derogatory, Jerry would not hesitate to hit him outside of the courthouse. I consider that a physical threat against a coworker. Jerry stated he was seated that Steve had repercussions at his job if he crossed Jerry and I consider that a verbal threat. Number three, he stated that the mediator hired by Ramsey County to attempt to work out the IT GIS and tax directors differences didn't have any experience dealing with this type of conflict. And furthermore, he, Jerry, only signed the agreement document after mediation because it was 6:00 PM and he wanted to go home. I consider this further insubordination. He signed a document stating that he agreed to be open, honest, and respectful in communication. They both signed that document. Jerry then specifically named three or four taxpayers that he would not send property tax exemption letters and notices to. Nobody asked Jerry to tell people they had to pay taxes when they're exempt from them. Jerry was instructed to send out letters stating that we needed on file tax exemption Our policy mandate doesn't cover this type of issue. However, I visited with Aaron Burst, who is legal counsel for the North Dakota Association of Counties. I also visited with John Trombley from Village Business Institute who did mediation. Mr. Trombley has 24 years' experience. He has six years of experience as a mediator in this type of situation and he does up to 10 of them a month. I consider him well-burst in mediation. He was not surprised when I told him of this issue. He said it got very testy during mediation as well and I feel that Jerry has drawn a very heavy line in the sand here. I don't take this matter lightly. The Red Sox have been personal friends of Tim and I for many years. I however take my duties as county commissioner and portfolio holder very seriously. I have an obligation to do what's best in the best interest of the taxpayers and the employees of Ramsey County. I have a copy of the agreement signed by Mr. Redsoff and Mr. Moll. And I also have a North Dakota Century Code on discipline. You want me to read it?
Go ahead.
Progressive discipline must be used to correct a regular employee's job performance problems or for a violation of rules or standards unless an infraction or a violation of a serious nature is committed, including insubordination, theft, falsification of pay records, or assaulting or threatening to harm a supervisor or coworker, patient or client, and for which the imposition of less severe disciplinary action would be inappropriate.
Can we see that mediation?
I have a copy for the question. Could we get a copy for the question, did you read that?
That would be public pressure.
Just for the people in attendance, this is the first we've seen this mediation agreement. Like Merna said, it was Village Business Institute, Vardell. This was approximately done, yeah.
July.
8th of July, so, okay. Any questions about that from the commissioners? All right. Okay, well, I guess it just might be like Jerry, have any to say?
Well, I also have a prepared statement, I guess, that I'd like to give you guys a copy of. First thing I would like to say is I did not say I was going to punch Steve.
It was very obvious your intent.
Let's just let him carry on here.
You want me to read it?
Yeah, that'd be all right.
This memo is in regard to certain individuals the past few weeks that escalated farther than insured this past Tuesday. On August 17th, 2015, Commissioner Heiser came in and demanded we send out farm residence applications to all 578 farmsteads identified by Steve Moll immediately. I said we were trying to correct known errors on the list as not to send to properties we knew were flooded, already taxed, et cetera. We also found additional errors on properties that weren't on the list. I wanted this done prior to meeting with the townships. I also wanted to get the new laws and guidelines concerning assessors from the tax commissioner's office prior to meeting with the townships. We received that information on August 24th so we could set up a meeting prior to sending applications. She said we weren't involving townships and to get them out by Friday, the 21st. I told her I didn't think that was possible. She then told me we were the only county in the state that hadn't done this. She also informed me that we have, all we have to do is check that the applicant did not have non-farm income over $40,000 and farm income has nothing to do with it. During this conversation, Commissioner Heiser made mention of a letter she received and appeared to be retaliating against me for this letter from the public. I did not know what to do, what we should do as to following her instructions. The law is very clear that there are several criteria that need to be met in order to qualify for the farm residence exemption. The instructions also contradicted what the entire commission indicated at a public meeting. At this point, I was relieved my brother called and needed help on our farm. I needed a break from the office. Our family lost two family members recently and we need to make the best of dry weather now more than ever, so I texted Commissioner Heiser and left. I've been taking this time off, time off this time of the year since I began working for Ramsey County, so this should not be unexpected. It also serves as a needed break for me after the final equalization meeting at Bismarck and prior to diving into the 2016 process. And I didn't just choose to leave those two days, that's when the combining started. The latest incident occurred on Tuesday, the 25th, when I asked Steve for a township map to assist with the farm residence procedure we've been working on. This map was also to serve as an ag land map to review the inundated land value reduction. He said he wanted the request by email. Even though that wasn't necessary, I agreed and went back to my office and made the request by email. By the way, that is one of the items that we agreed to on that sheet at the mediation is that the emailing that Steve demands would quit. It's just, that was one of the agreements on that deal. Shortly after, Steve and Commissioner Heiser came in and Merna questioned why I need a map. It caught me off guard, but I tried to explain and Merna tried to show me how to use a digital map on a tablet so I didn't need a printed map. At this point, I did get upset and that was what I, because that's what I've been dealing with for months. I don't think I should have to justify why I need a $2 map printed to help print with, or to help with functions of running my office. If justification is needed, my phone serves as my internet connection out on the road. Our laptop, I don't have a tablet, I use my phone and there's no service in many areas of county, so that's not an option to replace maps. We also use printed maps daily for essential duties. A small amount of taxpayer money to print maps isn't wasted. When Steve started this a few months back, I ordered a 150-foot roll of paper and thought that would solve this as it wasn't coming out of his budget. He then told me he was Steve the taxpayer and didn't want me wasting his money. Steve continued, Steve's continued behavior has created undue hardships for my office and others. I feel I've run a pretty tight ship for over 30 years through some very difficult times in the county. I've dealt with and been on many boards and have never been treated as unprofessional as the last few months. I have served as the Ramsey County taxpayer the majority of my life. I plan on early retirement and would like to leave on a positive note. Thank you.
Commissioners, have any questions to that? Steve, do you have a prepared statement or do you have anything you want to add or tell
Just, yes. Jerry has exhibited a pervasive pattern of bullying and harassment, harassing behavior that has made this a hostile work environment for me and many others throughout the courthouse. And I agreed to participate in the mediation as a last resort in hopes of resolving this conflict and I thought things were going, things were going much better until this Tuesday when Merna and I went down to talk to him. And, yes.
Okay, and that was August 22nd, correct? Commissioners, any questions to Steve?
I guess I do have one for Jerry. He comments here that he's definitely, he has never been so unprofessional as the last few months with his, with his board. I'd kind of like an example. And what has this board done unprofessional in the last few months?
I don't think I said the board, you guys, the board.
It says, "You've been on many boards and have never been treated as unprofessional as the last few months."
By a certain number of members. I was not pointing my finger at the whole board.
On the word "boards" means "board."
Any questions to Steve?
Did he ever threaten to hit you?
He would like to fight. It is...
Do you deny that, Jerry?
Yes, I do deny that.
He's said he's ready to take it outside. And, yeah, if, just as Merna said, if...
Were those words used?
I wouldn't say, I, again, I will tell you, I was completely floored. It took me a while to get home and write this down. He may not have used the word "hit," but his intent was very clear. Jerry, you know your intent was very clear.
What I...
Outside of this building, if he said anything that you felt was derogatory, you would take care of him.
And that's what I said, I, Merna, what I said...
Oh, maybe you didn't say you hit him. You said you'd take, you'd take care of him? Gee, where's the line here, Jerry?
What I said, if I can finish, Merna, was that if he would, Steve is very good at calling names and insulting. And I can only take so much of it and I said, "If you did that outside this courthouse, Steve, I would never touch you in here, but you would not get away with that outside this courthouse."
That sounds like a threat.
I guess, any other questions from the commissioners? I'd like to ask, commission, you want to hear from Beth, or is there a need? That's all right, you're all right, okay, go ahead.
Before I read the letter, just to clarify something on maps. I drive by myself all of this county and my cell phone doesn't always work. Sometimes on my roads where there's water on both sides, there's muskrat holes, there's a lot of things, so those maps do make a big difference. And not just for that, but just for my safety. So, I do feel that we ask for a map and it's for that reason it's important to receive it as quickly as possible, so when I do go out, I have extra security to know where I'm going.
Okay.
As requested by Commissioner Merna Heiser, I'm providing written documentation in regard to an event that occurred within the tax equalization offices on Tuesday, August 25th, 2015. Commissioner Heisler and Ramsey County GIS IT coordinator Steve Moll were in tax director Jerry Ratsoff's office. I was in and out of the office space and cannot comment verbatim as to what was said. I know from previous discussions, the conversation between Jerry, Steve, and Commissioner Heiser was over a map Jerry Ratsoff requested from Steve Moll earlier in the day. It sounded like Commissioner Heisler and Steve Moll were questioning Jerry Ratsoff as to why he would need maps. Jerry Ratsoff expressed he was consistently having difficulty receiving map requests from Steve Moll that he needed in order to get his job done. Steve Moll stated the agreement was that Jerry Ratsoff was to email any requests five days prior to needing them. Steve Moll replied that he had given Jerry a list of possible properties four weeks before today. At that point, it sounded like Steve Moll was questioning Jerry Ratsoff as to what the tax office had been doing since being given that list. Jerry Ratsoff stated Steve Moll didn't know all that the tax office has to do. Steve Moll stated he didn't think Jerry knew what Jerry was doing either. The conversation began to escalate as it became louder and at that point, I heard Jerry Ratsoff say he may not be able to take work in here anymore. Then I heard Jerry Ratsoff make a comment about wiping the smile off Steve's face. Commissioner Heiser stated the mediator reported that previous mediation was the worst the mediator had been involved in. Commissioner Heisler and Jerry discussed Jerry taking two days off the week before in order to combine, combine with his brother, even though she had told him that he had to have the farm residence exemption letters out by that Friday. This is one event in a series of altercations between them that have been uncomfortable for me. And I just, you know, obviously I'm in a hard spot, I could, who, I could upset a coworker, a supervisor, a commissioner, you know, so...
And that was on the 25th?
This is just the immediate incident here, what happened. That was all I was asked yesterday to comment on.
Any questions for Beth from the commissioners?
How do you interpret the term wipe the smile off his face?
I believe that it's heated, you know, that, that maybe when Jerry gets frustrated, he doesn't choose the proper terminology and actions and there probably isn't any excuse. One thing with that said is, in the past three years, has the county done a lot of training for employees on handling work environments and things? Other places I've worked, it's always, it's, you know, always been something that was mandatory throughout the years, you know, even things of sexual harassment training and all of those types of things, you know, are pretty common now in most workplaces to help individuals learn how to handle difficult situations.
And I've been responding, in response to that, I'd say that I already, the world challenge, this institute, to help our employees understand the concept of different issues of working with each other as they've been by this commission. And I don't know about the rest of the employees, but I've had a stack of pamphlets this time. If there was an issue with anyone, I would have expected them to go to their supervisor who would then come to us.
Yeah, so, like Merna said, we have access to Village Business Institute for situations like that.
And I knew that this situation was not good between these two individuals and that's why we ended up doing this mediation. And, you know, we worked very hard to try to resolve this issue, in my mind, but I still can't have, you know, I still can't have people coming up to me on the street and saying, "You're not doing anything about the farm residence exemption. It has to be done." It came up in February, there was a directive in April to get it, to get it, get a plan in place and get it done. And as far as I know, nothing tends to happen. I think, I think that, you know, they have taken the 578, it's not 578 residences, it's 578 structures that are, that are not listed as being taxed and started to comb through them. But the bottom line is, we're not asking anybody to pay taxes that shouldn't be paying taxes. This is, this is wrong. If, if a farmer has a home and it's flooded and he doesn't live in that home anymore and he gets this letter in the mail saying, "Do you qualify for the farm home residence exemption?" All he has to do is sign it, check yes, write inundated, uninhabitable, and send it back to the tax office. We're not asking anybody to do anything that is, that is illegal or immoral here. And I believe that they, they, they should have been worked on a long time ago and that's why I have pushed it. And pushing something that we legally need to do is not what I or any of these other gentlemen here as commissioners aren't supposed, aren't supposed to do, but gee, let me know. Aren't we supposed to be upholding the law and working for equalization of taxes for the taxpayers of Ramsey County?
Commissioner, do you have something else to add?
I would like to say, I went through the list and I finished it and it's not just structures, there were some problems with the way the list was created and not negatively, but just parameters can be missed and an example of... And an example of things that I was taking off of it were the commercial properties in Ramsey County. You know, there's custom communities of that that maybe have large shops, and they were showing on it, but they've been being taxed for years as commercial. So, I've removed those type of properties. And upon doing that, I also found other properties that were just, you know, maybe missed because it found other things than that. I have 555 letters sitting on our counter, ready to go.
And I thank you for that, Beth.
So, we have been working on this.
I would like to comment.
Jerry?
You know, I don't know that if the commission thinks that we can just drop the daily duties in the office and just do this. There's been many, many issues since February when this first came up that we've had to deal with. We haven't been just disregarding the farm residence exemption, it's probably talked about in the office daily. And, Myrna, you never asked us to see what we had been doing. We never, we never said that we weren't doing anything.
I think we're getting off task here.
And another question...
Let me finish, let me finish.
At the county commission meeting where we discussed the procedure, I had a procedure outlined that I gave to you guys to tackle this issue. And I would invite you to go back and look at that county commission video and see what the instructions were. They were pretty much exactly the opposite of what you told us to do, Myrna. Not involve the townships, I thought we were going to involve the townships. That's why we were waiting for the assessors to get the certification requirements so we could meet with the townships. And we just got that the 24th of this month. And you instructed me that we weren't going to meet with the townships, and I was understanding that we weren't going to. So, there's some miscommunication with the entire commission versus what Myrna was telling us, or telling me to do. And that's what, really, some of this escalating the other day was direct instructions to kind of disobey what the county commission instructed me to do.
Okay. Any questions for anybody in the commission?
I agree, I think we got off task. I don't believe that we're talking about this, I think we're talking about the events that occurred and the way things were handled and, you know, I'm looking at this...
I would just let him finish.
Yeah, yeah.
It's fairly obvious that between the two of you, there's disagreement. I mean, the question isn't... Myrna and I had spoken with Steve Mo, it was probably a week or two before this July mediation, I brought up the concept of mediation because I thought we have to do something. Because you guys have to be able to work together. Regardless of what occurs at this point, I mean, how are we supposed to trust you to work together? I mean, essentially, we are your boss, all five of us, but we're not in the building on a daily basis to watch both of you, and you're department heads. I mean, you have to be able to work together, and that's why I thought mediation, if we've got a set of guidelines on paper to follow, hopefully, we'd be able to establish something. But it just doesn't seem to be working, unfortunately. I don't know what the answer is, I guess.
And again, I did direct Mr. Mo to get all of the maps done for him.
Can I ask another question?
Go ahead, Jerry.
Why was I questioned on getting the $2 map? When I asked for the map, I was nice about it, I asked, and I have a map of one township so we could see an example. Why was I even questioned on why I needed the map? It's $2 to print the map, but I can't understand why...
So, if you're questioned about something you don't like, you feel that you have the right to respond in the manner you did on Tuesday afternoon? I guess that's just what I want to know.
No, I don't, I didn't, I hit the boiling point.
If you think that you can behave like that in the workplace, I don't know what to say to you, Jerry.
I will say, I've had that position for years, and I have dealt with some very difficult situations. And I hit the boiling point the other day, I admit it, you know, that's... But I did not threaten to hurt somebody.
Jerry, can you answer me? Do you, you don't have at your disposal the capabilities of printing a map that you need? I mean, we saw maps on our tablets and stuff that Steve handed out to us, and we can't print from the tablets, but if I go to my regular computer, I can outline and print maps. You know, what kind of a map did you need that he hasn't provided for you already? The map that I saw had all the farmsteads or the building sites that he had listed right there, and had triangles by them, some kind of bullet point by them.
And that's the map that I asked for, was that map. Of just one township, not the whole county on one small map.
So, there isn't a capability of printing a portion of that map through your computer?
I suppose I could, I guess it would take some time for me to figure out how to do that. You know, the plotter's right by Steve's desk, it's not in my office, so... I'm sure I could do it if I spent a half a day lining it up and trying, but, you know, I guess my understanding was Steve was the mapper, that Steve was hired to help my office. And, you know, this past few months now, Steve has cost me a lot more time than he has helped me. Because every time I ask for something, I've got to email it, and then I might not get it, or it's wrong when I get it, so then I have to ask Steve again, and then if this doesn't go well, it's been a very aggravating few months here. I actually haven't been asking for maps that we need because it's just been a hassle every time I ask for a map.
What do you say, Steve?
I say I can't help them if they don't ask. And it's not the fact that printing a $2 map is upsetting to me, it's the two hours of prep time for each map, and then times 36, townships, then there goes my week, type thing. And I think that Jerry thinks that I don't have anything else to do besides, if I'm not working on anything for him, I don't have anything to do. So, I'm just sitting here doing nothing, and I can drop whatever I'm doing, work on his stuff, and get it to him immediately. And it's just not the case, and with the mediation, the agreement was to email me the specifics, and then it would be done as soon as I could. But at the most, five days, because maybe I've got something else to do. And everything has been done within the timeframe and as everything according to that agreement we came up with. And I think since then, I've maybe gotten two requests from them. And he's gotten them.
So, are you working on individual township maps for them? So, Jerry, are you wanting those so that you can give them to the assessors, the township assessors, or the... You know, so they each have their individual map of those? Maybe we're getting off again, but I just want to know.
That, and to have them laying on the counter, because when we send out 500 letters, we're going to get people coming in. And we're not going to be able to pull them up on the computer one at a time. In fact, right now, our computer isn't even working, the one that we show to the public. So, they were for that, and to drive out in the country. If we have to go out to a farmstead, I want the flooded land shown, and we were going to use that because it wouldn't lay down, we're going to have to start dealing with the inundated land issue too. It was, that map was going to be used for more than one purpose. I'm not wasting the taxpayers' money by asking for maps.
We used to use those little atlases that they have to drive around the country, and I remember I marked those up every year as to which roads were passable, which ones worked, we had our routes all laid out and everything on them. So, I'm sure you still do that, but...
Any other questions from the commissioners?
Did you say that this mitigation was a waste of time? Did you say your only reason you signed it was to go home at 6:00?
At the point I signed that, that's the way I felt, is that we have been there all...
So, you wasted your full day of productivity, Steve's whole day of project, and $1,500. You thought it was a total waste of time?
No, I didn't say it was a total waste of time.
Well, it doesn't appear that you're doing what the agreement states.
Nor is Steve. It was supposed to be open communication, not emails for everything I need.
It says email in there. And that's what I got out of it. And I thought, I just asked for the specifics when you came in and asked for it. So, I would make sure that there's a record of... Everything on the map is what you asked me to print. And then, because there's been that before where if I don't do... If you come over and ask me for something and then it doesn't get done, you don't have any record that I didn't do anything. Now, you've got a record if you don't have a map. I thought it was for everyone's benefit, but...
Okay, any other questions from the commissioners?
I just, I'm just going to make a statement, and I see a pattern here. I see a pattern of ignoring an agreement. I see a pattern of disobedience, and I see a pattern of bullying. I mean, if this would have been any other business, you'd have been done right then and there. Number one, for the disobedience. Number two, for the bullying. I mean, you just don't act like this in public places. You know, we've tried to see if we can fix the problem. It doesn't appear like we're fixing the problem. I just, you know, I hate to do this, but I would ask that we terminate Jerry Ratsoff as our tax commissioner. We cannot have this kind of behavior. And I will make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion without effect. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
What are our other options?
You know, I'll make this easier for you guys. I typed this up before I came in. This is in fact on November 1st, I'm done here.
I shall see it. Yeah, I guess, before I ask for the last second, but I'd like to say, you know, going along with what Adam said, you know, we're commissioners, we're not in this building every day at all. You know, we're here probably two, three, maybe four times a month for meetings. You know, we rely on department heads to take care of the county business. And we put a great deal of trust in department heads. And we're not here on a daily basis to referee. I guess, with that, I'll offer a second, and a motion on the table, whether or not...
Can I change my motion at this point?
I'll see if we get a second, I guess.
We'll die for a lack of a second.
Motion died for a lack of a second. And we're open to more motions.
Then I would like to make a motion that we exempt his resignation effective immediately. Because I don't want another two months of bullying.
Okay, motion to that effect.
I'll set that motion.
A second to that motion?
I'd like to correct it to be, instead of resignation, to have it be retirement. I think you lose that, instead of resignation, retirement.
I'm okay with that. We need the ability to do that, Bonnie, you don't...
Let me see what... My only concern would be, we'd have, when you deal with resignations and retirements, there are some processes that have to go through through the public employee's retirement system. Accelerating it may cause some issues with that. Mr. Ratsoff have any feelings as far as being effective immediately or not? I don't know. So, on the legal side, his resignation is effective, you know, that he submitted, is November 1st. I don't think that this is quite the same as effecting it immediately is the same as what his resignation is.
Anything to add, Jerry? Thoughts on that?
Well, I was just going to help the office transition, I guess, through this. That's what my plan was, that's why I was given two months. And there is a two-month requirement to the public employee's retirement system for...
To the benefits. The two months is what rolled down the benefits, is that what you said?
I think it's something like approximately that.
Anything else, Jerry?
So, would you put him on leave with pay for two months?
That's possible.
No, I think at this point, you probably should talk with Mr. Ratsoff as far as the terms. That would probably be a more beneficial way to end the issue and accept his retirement because I'm sure Mr. Ratsoff has been eligible for retirement for quite some time.
Well, I guess we're negotiating now in terms of will you accept, I guess.
Well, I'm...
I guess, I think the commissioner wants you done today. Tell us what you want.
Well, I'd like to leave my desk, I'll, I guess.
But that's the extent of your request.
Well, my request was to retire on November 1st. You know, I guess, I hadn't really thought about meeting February today, I guess, so...
Adam, any thoughts?
Well, we have a current motion on the table, correct? Do you have a motion?
I'm just going to make the statement simply that I wasn't comfortable with termination. I am comfortable with the fact of letting you retire. Because it's obvious that from this point forward, you're, I mean, it's just, you can't go on. I mean, that's the unfortunate part of it, I wish you guys could, we've tried everything. At this point, I think the best thing for everyone involved is just to allow you to step away and retire on your terms and leave, and then Steve will be able to operate without the problems that both of you have with each other, and hopefully, everything will... And hopefully, everything will work out fine for everyone and we can go from there, I guess. This is what I have to say. In terms of the motion and the second, I guess I would like to see if we would allow Jerry to get his office cleaned up and probably put him on essentially leave for the last... Up to the 1st of November to allow him to roll down on the retirement plan. I mean, I think we owe you that much for being here for 30 years. I think that's a fair way to do it. And then the two months leave paid and then we'll move on from there.
Is that acceptable, Jerry?
Yep.
I just have a question.
Go ahead.
When I have him use his vacation time, is that what you're saying, for the two months?
Under, I don't know if you're...
Because I need it spelled out.
Yeah, it's in our handbook, the different ways we can affect this. We can essentially suspend with LPG, suspend with pay, or terminate. I guess we can't have a motion on top of a motion. But my thought for instance would be just essentially allow him to do leave with pay and just, you know... And allow him to keep his vacation and pay out.
Do we have November 1 in the motion, Elizabeth?
Well, he said it immediately.
Immediately, okay. Let's go ahead with that motion. We have a motion and a second to that effect.
Is that retire at the beginning?
Yeah.
Well, how does the motion read exactly?
Go ahead.
Well, I didn't make the motion.
Mark, what is your motion directly?
That he be allowed to, well, he used to retire, effective immediately instead of November 1st. Just so that we don't have two more months of he said, she said, and sticks and stones in the rock. I need to clean this mess up and move on.
That's the second you made, Myrna?
Yes.
My only question, that would be the same as Lonnie. I mean, how does that affect him with rolling out of the endy first and all that?
Okay, we can go ahead.
That's all I'm asking. That's just for clarification sake.
We can act on this motion or we take Lonnie and then go ahead and vote on this motion.
I think we will.
And then we can move into the next phase.
Yep, you can act on this motion as before. And then, because there's always, when it comes to retirements and resignations, there's a lot of administrative things that come up that are going to happen within the auditor's office, payroll, within the public employee's retirement system as to eligibility and some things like that. We need to get that squared away for everybody's sake.
Well, and I can explain too with hers. You can retire, I mean, Jerry's could say he wants to retire, fill out the forms. I can terminate him at the end of the month. He would start getting his retirement. He wouldn't get it in October, September. He would get his first check in November and it would be two months. And also with the county, when you retire, you're covered for 30 days with our Blue Cross Blue Shield. So he'd be covered until the end of October. And then if he so chooses to go with the purse plan, well, it's not for now. He could do that or he could choose to deprover with Ram to County for 18 months as long as he brings the money into us every month for his premium, so...
So it essentially takes a-
So there's not a 60-day leeway anymore to retire.
It takes a month, it takes a month of leave of retirement time for them to get the paperwork done and then they have to back the two-month check.
Right, no matter if you retire next month or come out there. No, it's just a matter of him getting the paperwork and me doing the last transmetal procurers. And then it's not like it used to be. There used to be a 60-day.
Yeah, okay.
When you have to.
We have a motion and a second on the table. Let's go ahead. Is there any other discussion on that particular motion?
Just so we all agree that he gets the benefits of honorable retirement.
I put on there to retire immediately.
Any other discussion on that motion? Roll call.
Martins? Leifman?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Eisler? Brown?
Aye. Okay, any other discussion?
I asked that Commissioner Eisler to propose to go along again and just clean out his office and stuff. And that you just give it to personal administration.
Any other discussion? Any other questions? Nothing else?
I just read the motion. I just make sure I have it on. Motion may or may not second my high third to accept the retirement of Jerry Retsloff, Brans County Tax Director immediately as of 8/2015. And then roll call with Leifman, Olson, Eisler, and Brown. Aye. Motion three.
Bill?
If we're done with that, I'd like to make a motion that Commissioner Eisler, State Attorney Lonnie Olson, and Elizabeth, the auditor, we come up with an article to put in favor to advertise for some help.
We put that in a motion form, did we?
Yes.
Put a second to that.
Can we do that, be it as a special meeting?
Didn't understand.
A motion to ask for, to advertise for that.
Does that fall under personal ownership?
Well, at this point, the commission, since we're going to have a vacancy in the position, it would probably be who the commission to appoint an interim tax director. And I don't know, on the top of my head, the qualifications, what we have as far as certified appraisers and things like that. We do have, I believe, Beth has got some experience in appraisals and obviously working in the office. I believe she's got a 40-year degree.
Can we put that on for September 1?
That's probably a good idea to put on the agenda.
Research it to Elizabeth.
You want me to retract that then?
Bill?
You want me to retract that?
I think we should, yeah. And then we'll deal with it on September 1.
Okay, I'll retract my motion.
Mr. Chairman, can I just give clarification? I guess I didn't really follow what am I using my vacation up now from now till winter runs out? Is that what?
That wasn't clarified, I guess. We want you done today, but...
So I'll find that out later.
Is that from the commission on that or what?
The commission should have a motion in the second as to how you want to deal with that.
Well, essentially, how...
That's what I was alluding to when I asked to give him honorable retirement. So he would retain his, all his sick leave and annual leave. And basically just be...
So I would be on the max for next month's payroll?
Now, I understood that the motion was in the description by Elizabeth is we're treating it like a normal retirement. It's just you're not giving us two months. So you still have your crew vacation time to pay out. You still have your crew, all that out. You just have to file the paperwork now.
And just so the board knows, the payroll for September is done, so it'll be paid out November 1.
Okay.
I should say August it's done, so it'll be paid out in October, three. So before you leave, I'll have you sign a rec... Let's say you agreed to your payout.
It's just brought up in discussion. Do you want me to make a motion to that effect?
Yes, let's do that.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Want me to get that?
Go ahead.
Motion may or may not second my life on with the Jerry Retsloff Tax Director vacation sick leave in October 1st check. The office is done. It's September, date of his first, as hell works. And then vacation sick leave does not affect his retirement check. That's not right for the time. Because since you're having him retired at the end of this month, so... But I will give Jerry the packet on what forms you need to fill out to get into the... Is that how you want the motion to be?
Any other questions from the commission? Roll call.
Eisler?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Leifman?
Aye.
Martins? Brown?
Aye. Okay, anything else? Other thoughts? We're done.